We can explain the difference there, yeah.
The precept is rising by fifteen percent. But the tax bill for any individual, because the tax base has increased, will be twelve point eight percent.
Yeah, and the tax base obviously is because there's an increased number of properties. So there's more properties paying the council tax, so that's why that works. And it's, I think it's very positive. If we manage to vote this through, it means that we can do some things that really need doing, like improving the playparks, for instance, continuing to give grants to people that request them. And when you look at the amount of the increase, although fifteen percent sounds like a lot of money, when you look at the actual pound increase that that is for a band D property, I think it's about fourteen pounds a year. And obviously, when that's all taken into account, it means we can do things that we should be doing, that we have to do in that the playparks.
Okay, thank you. Right, anybody else who speaks?
Propose first.
Yes, so a proposer please.
Can I just ask about the process? If I'm proposing, do I speak to that proposal or at the end?
You say now.
So first of all, can I have a proposal? So I've got a proposer for the motion, yes.
That we pass the budget.
Yeah, yeah, I'll have a second then.
Off second.
So for the minute, we have councillor Crimlin proposing councillor Bowles. Ah, it's a second then, okay. So as you can see on here, you've got your rules of debate.
Engagement.
So we have a motion proposed, we have it seconded, which means you can now go forward for debate. And as you can see, there's a regular reply by the mover of the motion. So you may speak now, but it's not the right way to speak here. So I've got hands up.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes.
Yes, you've got your seconded, yeah?
Yeah.
Can I speak first?
No, well, you could have done that.
Pause and second then, you'd have had to go first and second, wouldn't you?
No, no, not necessarily. But I'll bring you some guys, they're brilliant, Steve. And then think it was.
Well, no, I'm just gonna say brilliant. And tying with what they were saying, absolutely, we need to get on the playparks and we can't let our grants to our volunteer groups go by the wayside. Things have increased, as we know, year to year. And amazingly, after years of not putting it up and years of kind of almost neglect, we're a dutiful council that has a duty of care to our community. And I think that is reflective in the fact that we're still playing catch-up with Morpeth and Anick, which is, you know, incredible, really. So we're now on a level playing field, as it were. What I find even more brilliant about this budget is that it's been firsted and seconded across party. So you've got Labour and Conservatives. And really, it's a testament to people putting party politics aside for the good of the community. And I think that's what we've done in the four years. We've kind of transcended that because we all believe in working really hard for the community. And I think that's very much reflected in the cross-party proposal and seconding. I think it's a testament to our council. So I'm totally behind this rise in the precept.
Stephen.
Stand up. May it be unexpected that I second this proposal for the last three years and the only person who's voted against every increase. I did that on a matter of principle because that's what I was elected for. Sometimes events happen and you have to judge what's principle and where there's a necessity to do something. And there's a necessity to raise the precept to a level that makes the town council and its responsibilities sustainable. I don't regard it as a sort of crisis budget in a way because of the events surrounding the playpark. There's a sixty thousand pound hole, a black hole, I couldn't use that expression. And I look at people and I think we're all, we all want to be, and I pinch your expression, Penny, community activists. But community activists are only active if they do us. It's no good saying you want to be doing this and you want to be doing that. We've got to make certain that things that people expect are delivered. And as a consequence of that, we've got to do what's right. Now bizarrely, you would think I would be quoting Edgar or Shakespeare or something. I'm going to quote Sir Keir Starmer. I'm not gonna say Raphael Warren or anything, but in a recent debate, Keir Starmer said, "A debate should be about verified facts." And it just resonated with me, the concept of resonated facts. Verified facts, sorry, verified facts. That's what we're debating today. So how have we got to this situation? Well, there's been a shortfall. The shortfall revolves around, and I'll start with part of the shortfall when it's been touched on by us. Our overheads have increased as a consequence of the man following Jane's departure as clerk. Our overheads increased and there's an increase in staff salaries even from last year of ten percent. With fixed costs, you can't cut back on fixed costs. This is how much it costs to keep things going. So it's no good looking at things and saying, well, we can slash this and slash that. I'm not prepared to slash community grants as part of this precept budget. I'm not prepared to do it, and if it was, I'd perhaps resign. So why is the precept, if I'm saying it's a crisis, there's a sixty thousand black holes such? That was done really as an act of gross vandalism in the last year. I'm not in a position, I don't think any of us should, to be finger pointing to previous administrations not investing. Because this town council, within the last three years, did not invest in playparks. It came almost as a shock as a wanton act of vandalism. And we've now got to the situation where if we don't act, the playpark and the seal park is not fit for purpose. And I don't want to be part of a town council that shuts down the playpark simply because of barging by fiscal rules. The budget itself, therefore, I think is necessary. I'm a little bit disappointed that in terms of grants, there wasn't more grants. If we're talking about verified facts, it's the lowest percentage of grants made to community groups out of the total budget. And I spoke to the mayor about the possibility of other grants that were refused. The CAB, for example, Citizens Advice Bureau, is something that I would like to see this town council support. It's when town, you know, we're all patting each other on the back, we should give up some money to say, we encourage you, what you do. There's a couple of councillors who are interested in animal welfare, for example. How can we not support an animal charity that deals with loneliness and isolationism? And why that's based in Hexham, can't understand it. And are we really gonna go to the electorate in May, I'm not standing, and say, we're not supporting Town Deal Hospice at Home, even though we've put the precept up fifteen percent? So although I'm agreeing and seconding to a fifteen percent increase in the budget, I'd like to see those retained in some form and small amounts given to them. Because this town is better off with as much community activity as possible. And that's why, you know, we are voted the best person in Britain. It's not by chance, it's not because we're all great town councillors, it's because other people may live in Hexham Gray. And those other people are from community groups, pillars of such. And I wasn't prepared to see a Hexham youth initiative or a Hexham community centre take a cut in their precept, in their distribution as a consequence of things that are happening externally. That's nothing to do with them. Penny mentioned, and she didn't want to be part of a town council that delivered an austerity budget. Quite right, absolutely, a hundred percent right, and that's why I'm seconding this. The precept will increase by fifteen percent. I'm hoping we can squeeze a few more hundreds, if not thousands, in terms of savings. But we should be looking to expand, not contract the services that we offer as such. And we spoke, Suzanne's a top girl. We spoke about before about supporting our community services, our community groups, and trying to retain and maintain, which is not always easy, trying to be the best that we can be. So to be the best we can be and maintain the support for those community groups, that's why I've agreed to fifteen percent increase in the budget. I spoke at the beginning about community activists, about doers. I think now is the time to look at ourselves and do what's right and support this budget. Thank you.
So I've just heard a few comments before, and I have in the past few years, about how the previous administration, Conservative Town Council, has left the town council in a financial mess, neglect, with all the words asked by news. However, I'd like to counter some of those misleading allegations. It was Conservative Town Council that pushed for the Hexham High Street Action Zone application together with the county councils, winning two point four million pounds of funding for the town. This funding has allowed the town's high street to be greatly revitalised. It was the Conservative Town Council that initiated the Hexham Road Sweeper. We have a look for up here today, keeping our town and streets clean. We used to have yearly professional deep cleans, which greatly improve the appearance of our beautiful town. During the Covid lockdowns, when many of our local charities were at breaking point, we used our reserves to prop up and support many organisations like the Forum Cinema, Number Twenty Eight, Hexham Community Centre, the Torch Centre, and many others. It was a Conservative-led council that won the Newcastle and Northumberland Local Council of the Year Award in twenty nineteen. The precept back in twenty twenty-one to twenty-two was three hundred and forty thousand. Should the budget go through as supposed, it will be five hundred and ninety-one thousand one hundred. This is a two hundred and fifty-one thousand pound increase in actual value terms. This equates to seventy-four percent, a seventy-four percent increase over the last four years. If increases were in line with inflation, the new budget would be four hundred and twelve thousand, which means the town council will have an additional one hundred and seventy-nine thousand above inflation increase next year. Has the town council services increased by one hundred and seventy-nine thousand? Being an effective, efficient town council should be something to take pride in. I would argue that we as a town council have a moral duty to be cost-effective. Every pound you take away from Hexham residents is a pound they can spend elsewhere. It would go towards heating, eating, or enjoying the many fine shops and restaurants Hexham has to offer. It is because of this I'll be voting against the precept increase of fifteen percent. And propose an increase of three point nine percent in line with inflation.
Okay, thank you. Tom, anybody else? Ginny.
At the FNGP meeting, I abstained from the vote. The reason for that being that I actually fall between both stools. So while in principle I agree with a rise in the precept, I feel that fifteen percent is too high, particularly on top of the rises that we've had in previous years. I do feel that to some extent we have been playing catch-up with Morpeth and Anick, et cetera, on the back of previous councils. I don't wanna get into mudslinging and name-calling and any of that because we inherited what we did. Since then, we have made decisions to raise the precept, and that has been decided against this year. However, I don't feel that it needs to be such a sizable increase. And that's why I abstained and will be abstaining tonight.
And one, please. Anybody else?
I would like to acknowledge how well all councillors have spoken on this matter. As a new councillor, it's a real privilege to see the passion from everyone and the healthy debate that we have. And I would consider it a privilege to be able to sit here and listen to all of that. And I thank everyone for their support in getting me up to speed with understanding all of this because it's a lot to take in. And I obviously have not been exposed to everything that's gone on and couldn't possibly have caught up. So it's nice that we're able to have these conversations to help each other understand. I am in support of the increase, taking the position of hearing what we talked about in committee and the need to put those reserves back that have either not been raised or have been spent in the past, which for me, the reasons at this point are not as relevant. I'm looking kind of forward and thinking, what do we need for the future of the town? And for me, that needs to be, that reserve has to be put back. Perhaps future budgets will reflect that those reserves have been put back. But at this time, I think we have to acknowledge that it is needed. So that's how I see it.
Anybody else? Tom?
Yes, just to echo that, yes, I'm in support of the increase. As I think, as people have already said, that there is a, there's an issue with just the fabric of what we support at the cemetery, some of the buildings are falling down, the operations manager, windows are completely falling apart, can't divide as well because it's absolutely freezing. Some of the chapels are just dilapidated. We've been looking at the Seal Playpark, which is the central playpark in Hexham, and the costs for that are quite high, so we have to start putting reserves. And that's only one of the eight playparks that we need to maintain, so we need to be doing that eight times. So there's a need to start to put the reserves away. And then in terms of the staff costs, we need to make sure that the cemetery runs and we kind of keep all the workers kind of happy in their work. And make sure we need to provide the right coverage, though we have agreed to look at that. So we're looking at doing an audit, and we've got an action plan to try and look at making the cemetery pay for itself. Also, just look at that thing in the whole to make sure it's where we kind of want to kind of run things and take things forward. Let's play peace.
Okay, thank you. Alison.
Yeah, my plan for this evening is to abstain from this vote on the grounds that I feel that we haven't quite got our own house in order. And until we've had an audit of staffing costs, I'm not comfortable with increasing the precept. I feel comfortable increasing the precept on the grounds of the work that needs to be done for the playparks. But for the rest, I'm not as convinced.
Anybody else? All right, so we'll be going to Penny in a moment, but I'll say in my piece. So, Tom, I'll just remind you that you did vote for the budget last year because obviously what you've said in that statement was about the whole four years.
I was in the place of your budget, that.
Yeah, yeah, that's correct, but I'm just reminding you that you did vote for the budget last year. Because obviously the statement you made was about the four years, so just, that's a fact, a matter of fact. So I'm not criticizing, just a matter of fact. Right, so where are we? Right, so what this will do, if this is voted through, will take us to, if I had a dingband, will pay one hundred and twenty-nine pounds eighty-one pence, which is, two pound fifty a week. Two pound fifty a week. That is what we, these are the coppers we are talking about here, two pound fifty a week. Now you try and get a cup of coffee in Hexham for two pound fifty, you'd be very, very, you'd be challenged. Two pound fifty. Now remember, all those two pound fifties, as somebody mentioned before about saying it's taking money out of people's pockets. But that money comes in the Hexham Town Council. Everybody pays their contribution, and all that money is then put back in the Hexham. So what do we look at? Look at the fabulous Christmas lights we had this year. I was just so proud walking around the town. My eyes were bouncing out my head every time I walked around the town with those Christmas lights. They were just fabulous. And when you went to other places, you'll just go like, they're not a patch on Hexham. They're not a patch on Hexham. We have done fantastic work as a council, putting the right money in the right place. And everybody saying the same thing does not look fabulous. So we should applaud ourselves for that because that is what the public want and that's what the public got. It was amazing, looking at that fantastic Christmas tree, all those beautiful lights on it, and all around, the wraparounds, around the shambles, the bridge, down Market Street, along Four Street. They just look amazing. So this is where the money's been invested, into making Hexham a better place. Somebody mentioned saying that we took our eye off a ball about the playparks and stuff and that the last three years, we hadn't done enough for the last three years. Well, I think it's much longer than that, actually. I think it's about a fifteen-year problem, to be honest. That was the year, two thousand and eight, when the playparks, which were owned by Town Deal Council, and Town Deal Council was dissolved and it became a unitary authority. However, the county council took many of the services and the town council was given some of the other stuff. Some of those things were the playparks. And that, you know, they're expensive liability playparks. They're great fun for the kids, but they're really, really expensive. And I haven't, you know, in those fifteen years, this town council didn't really have a plan of how to maintain and upgrade. They looked after them, and if there was anything went wrong, you know, it did things and it made sure that there weren't health and safety problems. But there was no real plan of attack of how we're gonna improve these, what happens at the end of the lifespan of like some of these things. And that's what we're seeing now, is like some of these playparks and some of the items in the playparks have just expired past our sell-by date. And we need to put a plan in there. And that is why, you know, we've had residents approach us and say, they didn't want to attack us, they wanted to work with us very constructively, which we thank them for that. And that's why we wanted to do that with the playpark, is we need to get some money. Unfortunately, there's no money in the section 106 from housing developments that put playparks money in there. That fund is dry at the moment, has no money in it. So we need to have a plan, or we just leave the playparks to just decay and decay and decay, which many of us don't want, don't think that's the right way forward. So if you're voting against this and you abstained against it, you're actually not in favour of the playparks because that's where the money comes from. So I think there's many things in here where, you know, we've looked at as a town council, we've said we play our active role in the heritage zone, that we would take on and look after the benches, the planting and all that, that would fall to us and that we would pick up the costs of those things. So we've been an active and engaged member, not standing back, but actually playing an active role in that and actually taking on accountability and responsibility for those things. And I think again, that is this town council showing its ambition. But if I was to roll back and say, you know, if there has been some criticism of the previous council incumbent, my view, I also, the Hexham Town Council under the Conservatives was competent, but not ambitious. And that's it. And it was that ambition that was the difference, ambition, that this town council has had ambition to actually do things. So we've done that, we've pushed forward, we've been ambitious, we've had new events. The barn stand sessions, that barn stand stood there as an empty barn stand. It wasn't a barn stand, it was a stand, and it didn't do anything. What did we do the first, as soon as we got in, we organised barn stand sessions. And from that, we've had barn stand sessions every year. We've also had the spin-off, The Bluegrass, and how fantastic that's been. So we've really built on all these things, and they all cost money. But the kickback is that Hexham is a happier place, that people actually start to come to Hexham as a place of tourism and actually think, God, this is what a great place Hexham is, and it's a vibrant community. And then what you start to see is the outcomes of that, is that the economy gets better. And what have we seen over this last year? Lots of independent shops opening. And they wouldn't open if there was nothing happening in this town. There's things happening in this town which gives them confidence to do that and open, and that's what they've done. So what we're voting on, what we are now, as this town council in over the four years, is we've actually reached the point where we are now in range and in the, in the range of our peers, Morpeth, Anick, et cetera, where we're in the same point. So some of the things we can say is like, as sixteen town parishes in the county with a precept over a hundred and forty thousand in twenty-four, twenty-five, so the last year, not for this, for last year. And the average day band was one hundred and twenty-seven pound sixty pence. Us putting this up will put us to a hundred and twenty-nine. So we are, they're at a hundred and twenty-seven as an average, obviously I would expect that to go up. So we're gonna be at a hundred and twenty-nine. So we've actually reached, we've actually reached now to a point where we wanted to be, where we've benchmarked ourselves to go, we need to be where everybody else is. The reason why they're there is because that's what the money they need to do what they need to do. And that's what they've done. So we are not an outlier now, we were an outlier by a margin in that we didn't have enough money. But we've now took ourselves into the pack, right into the centre of that pack, and that is a good thing to do. I think we can like pat ourselves on the back for all the things we've done. So as I say, it's gonna be two pound fifty a week, which equates to a fourteen pound and eighty-one pence increase. So it's twenty-eight pence a week, that's what we're talking about here. So I think, you know, and I understand people, you know, democratic right, if you don't vote for it, you don't have to. But just to put us all in the perspective, that is what it is. So I'm now going to the.
I would like to respond.
No, 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 no.
I will have a response.
You will not have a response.
You cannot tell, like say to everyone, that I'm against playparks and not that I'm your response.
I must.
So I will have a response, thank you.
I did not say that.
So you stood. So around six years ago, the previous town council put in the 106 funding and in that funding for the playpark, the Hexham Seal, we got new swings, we got the trampoline, we got tyre swings, and we had a new roundabout, and we got new servicing. That was in the past six years. We also, as a town council, put forward funding for the skate park. There was the new wheel skate park, that was an initiative from us to start with. And you're saying there's not enough money for the 106 funding. Well, we've just spent ninety thousand pounds spent on a paddle court within Hexham. Surely, there's 106 money, obviously that's now depleted, it's gone, so we need to wait for the 106 money. That's where we've always spent money from the 106 funding. The estimates for the new playpark is gonna be between seventy-five and what, ninety thousand pounds? We've spent ninety thousand pounds on the paddle court.
That was, so that was the county council, that was a sport, not playpark, which is two separate things. So is this a play or not?
That will probably be allowed in the future. Anyway, so I haven't had my say, I'm not against playparks.
Right, so I'll bring Penny in as the proposer.
Right, thank you very much. So this has been a really interesting discussion. I'd just like to raise some points. Obviously, as a proposer, I'm in favour of this.
I'd just like to raise, raise some points, obviously as a proposer, I'm in favour of this. First of all, I'd like to say that those people within the town who cannot afford to pay or in receipt of benefit, do not pay anything. Those people can afford to pay on Barn D will be paying twenty eight pence a week increase. And what do we get for that? If you roll back at the beginning of the life of this council four years ago, we put the precept up by twenty eight percent, we're talking about fifteen percent now. And you have to be careful of percentages because of course twenty eight percent of nothing is not very much. And so it didn't amount to very much then, we didn't get any kickback at all. And all the feedback that, that I get, I don't know whether this reflects other councillors' experience, is that people are so pleased that we've come together as a council, that, you know, we're a political mix and we have done the most amazing things in the last four years, I mean extraordinary things. And I think it would do us all personally a service if we actually got together and listed all the things that we've done. We've got projects going that never existed, we've, we've refurbished, we've pushed forward public events, free public events. This sort of principle that we have, that we support the life of the town because we can. And we don't charge people for things, so the Lantern Parade and the Spook Night and the, you know, all lots and lots of things that happen within the town don't cost anything. And we also support the, the community organisations in our town hugely. And without us at the moment, they would be in real serious trouble because funding is difficult to come by. So we have located ourselves as being the organisation, this is me speaking obviously, the organisation that underpins a raft of services that we are required to deliver and we deliver them to a hugely high standard. The cemetery is one of the best cemeteries in the county and gets awards all the time. So we, we, you know, our streets are, are clean, we have an incredibly responsive workforce. If something goes wrong, which it's bound to do within the town, you know, there's a drain blocked or something's fallen over, they are out there sorting it out, they are out there at six o'clock in the morning putting the Christmas tree up. Do not underestimate the amount of work that we do and the amount of work that they do in order to make this town what it is right now. What has happened is that we have got to start putting reserves away because of the state of the play parks. The Seal Playground is so heavily used, I'm surprised it's lasted, lasted this long. I mean, and that's not misuse, there's been some misuse over the last couple of years with vandalism. But basically, children doing what they do in playgrounds results in wear and tear. And where, and the clerk has given us an estimate for replacing, basically. We've got to a point where we cannot just keep patching up. And it's within a hundred and up to a hundred and twenty thousand pounds. Now, if we took any portion of that out of our budget as is, what would we, who would we be punishing, if you like, who would we be taking from? We'd be taking money from Number Twenty Eight, who we fund through the community partnership. We'd be taking money from the community centre, we'd be taking money from all sorts of agencies that keep, in many cases, people are less way off than we are to stay, you know, functioning and engaging in the town and living a life. We would be doing that, which is why I said we shouldn't, I don't want to be part of an austerity council. We've decided to spread that cost of the playground over a two-year period. And this is ignoring the fact that we've got buildings at the cemetery that have had very little attention and need attention. It's a hugely costly business. And so it's not like we're gratuitously putting the precept up. We've just thought, well, how much money can we get out of the people of Hexham? We did twenty eight percent in the first year, six percent in the second, six percent in the third. And now we have faced with this amount of money that we have got to raise. Now, I'm in favour of town councils bringing in external monies and I often talk about it and I actually do it. I've done it myself for the projects like Grow Hexham. But we've looked into funds available for play parks and they are very, very, very hard to find. And we cannot rely on the chance that we get a grant from an external agency in order to replace our play park. We have to find another way to do it. So to address Wendy's question, we looked at staffing, we had a discussion about staffing. Personally, our staff did the most magnificent job, they worked incredibly long hours in the summer and a reduced number of hours in the winter, so that there is a parity across, across the year. Within the winter, they are repairing machinery, they're out when they can be, you know, according to Stephen, they're still cutting grass, which they probably are. There's a huge amount, people think of them as the cemetery staff, they are not the cemetery staff. They are the town council staff who do everything that we have to do and more. And so I don't believe there's any slack there and I, and I, and I would resist that to my last breath. So where does the money come from? If we can't get it from an external agency, which we're unlikely to do, we're not prepared to cut our grants to those people who absolutely rely on us in order to make this town one of the best places I've ever lived. So what do we do? Our alternative, our only alternative, I suggest to all of you, is to raise the precept and this is people who can afford to pay their rates by twenty eight pence a week. Thank you.
Right, thank you so much for that. Uh, just one clarification. Um, just to let you know, so obviously we mentioned the two, the two pound fifty a week and that's for D band. And as you know, there's a A band, there's a B band, there's a C band, there's a D band, D band from the middle and then it goes up A, F, G to H. But in Hexham, sixty two percent of properties are below Band D. So that's, they're falling from A to C. So sixty two percent of the properties will not be paying two pound fifty, they'll be paying less than two pound fifty per week. Just so everybody's aware of that. So say for example, if you're an A band, you'll be paying one pound twenty five. So.
Sorry, is that A or E, sorry?
Sorry.
Is that A or E?
A. A would pay one pound twenty five. Um, and then it, it then goes to D is, uh, is the two pound fifty. And if you're the highest band, so if you live in a million pound mansion on Laser's Lane, you pay five pound per week. So that's what we're talking about, those are the trivial sums we are talking about here. But obviously it all, it all comes together, it all creates the summer money that we can invest back in the town. And you can see where that money goes. Um, Andrew, was there anything you want to say just about staffing, about the works that they do? Um, I'll, I'll do the vote just so we can answer Wendy Rich's question.
I think, I think Penny covered most of the bits that I would have mentioned, yeah.
So there's things like Remembrance Day where up at Crackerdome, well, the Fordome, the Remembrance Day, prepared and then they take all the stuff away. You know, preparing for our, for our farmers market, um, um, market stalls, you know, that they, they, they get that ready and take it away on, on a Saturday, you know, and, you know, there's loads of times that they'll work. You know, we've had trees come down in the, in the cemetery, we've had trees come down and that fell into the cemetery from the, um, from the golf course, um, um, fell into our, onto our land and they had to, you know, cut the tree down and, 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 you know, and all that type of stuff. So there's loads of works that need to be attended to that are beyond what the straightforward is.
I mean, I think, I think the key, the key bit about the numbers is that in order to remain operational, both for considering the work they do, um, particularly grave operations, making sure they comply with health and safety and to have sufficient scope of people to take time to cover any other unforeseen circumstances, then operate with any less than four, you're, you know, you're potentially causing, um, you increase the risk for embarrassment of things like services not being receivable. And that's not a situation that we wish to entertain.
So, so I hope that answers the question from Wendy Rich there. Right, so we will now go to the vote. Um, so the motion has been proposed by councillor Graham. The motion's been seconded by councillor Paul, we've had the debate. Um, you know, people have had their fair say as, as, as the democratic right. Um, so we will now go to the vote, so we'll, are we doing this, are we doing a name vote? Does anybody want a name vote? Name vote, we'll do a name vote, right, so, um, we will do it from, so, so Ariane will just ask for, um, four against, or abstain and we'll just go round.
For the new budget.
Or.
Four.
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 Abstain.
Against.
For.
Abstain.
Abstain.
Abstain, okay. So he, so that will be put in the minutes as, as was requested. And that will, I'm, I'm for. So, um, on that base of our numbers.
Well, it's thirteen of us. So nine for, one against and three abstain.
Right, so that means that this budget is passed and that, thank you for that. Thank you for all the hard work on that one.